Hearings, only about nine minutes late. So at this point, I will open a public hearing on proposed ordinance 930-15, an ordinance of the municipality of Murraysville repealing and replacing Section 220-31 CC of the zoning ordinance for exploration or production of oil or natural gas from a shale reservoir or source rock and adding new uses to Section 220-16, the table of non-residential land principal land uses.
Well done.
Alan?
I just called.
I should have had you read all of that.
I just called it oil and gas drilling ordinance.
I know, but I have to be precise.
I know.
For the record. Nancy will get mad at me if I'm not precise. Go ahead.
Turn this way if you don't mind. Good evening, everybody. This public hearing first has been properly advertised in the Penn Franklin News on March 29th and March 22nd, two weeks, consecutive weeks before the hearing was been held. The ordinance that's up for consideration has been advertised in the Penn Franklin, has been advertised on our website as far as what ordinance was sent to the Westmoreland County Planning Department and the Murraysville Planning Commission for review as part of the required 45-day review period. The reason for this public hearing is that it was determined that changes that were made to the ordinance both prior to the public hearing, the last public hearing that was held on this subject, and the, since the public hearing was closed before the ordinance was sent out for advertising, that there have been substantial changes made to the ordinance. That per requirements, case law necessitates a new public hearing and a new period of time for the comment to be given by Westmoreland County and Murraysville Planning Commission. This has been done, it's been sent to the county, it's been sent to the planning commission, and we'll review this evening, present this evening, what recommendations and comments have been received from those two entities. The thrust of the changes that were made to the ordinance were actually, have been working on since beginning of this year, and that dealt with a revision to how the measurement was conducted between a well pad and a protected structure. Previously, the measurement was from the well pad itself, the edge of the well pad outward. That was revised to be a measurement from the attached portion of a protected structure going toward the well pad, and the amount of that measurement was changed to 750 feet. And that is what the current ordinance reads as, at this time. There's also changes that were made because of that to definitions in the ordinance, including eliminating the term buffer, or use of the term buffer yard. Permanent facility definitions were changed, and protected structure definitions were also changed. And these were, these are the same now as they were presented at the public hearing, but for the 750-foot measurement. That has changed. Comments were received by the Planning Commission and the Westmoreland County Department of Planning. The Westmoreland County Department of Planning had two minor comments, and they were editorial in nature. Editorial meaning they weren't substantive to any policy or measurement or anything that would affect the implementation of the ordinance. They're editorial in nature, the first one of which was removing, adding in 50 feet to the description of 750 feet. It said 700 feet, and it had 750 feet in parentheses, so now it says 750 feet, both in the verbal description and in the numerical description. Additionally, in the section 7C, there was a duplicate of the term hundred in the same sentence. That was removed, so the sentence makes more sense now. From the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission has been discussing this ordinance the last couple of weeks, meetings rather, and last night at its meeting, it recommended approval of the ordinance as advertised with the change setback of 750. They also had some editorial comments on the provision, provisions. The term plat included the term buffer yard, which was removed, otherwise removed from the ordinance, so to be consistent, the term buffer is being removed from that definition. Also in Section 6B4, the term buffer yard is also included in the requirements for the plat to be submitted. That also has been removed to be consistent with the new ordinance. And finally, in the term protected structure, there was a provision that was missing, that had an extra comma, and we took that out, so it clarifies that sentence. And also, there is a provision that reads that the protected structure is any structure in the overlay area, overlay district. It was determined that a protected structure could be outside the district. If it was close to the belt border of the overlay district, and the well pad was close to the border of the district, it was conceivable, may not be likely, but conceivable, that it could, that could occur. So that was changed to remove the term oil and gas recovery district from that term, which would make protected structures anywhere in the municipality, as long as it was within that measurement point. As I said, these changes are determined to be minor. We've reviewed those changes with our special counsel, Mr. Sidik, and his recommendation and conclusion was that if this ordinance was adopted, or we wanted to proceed to adoption, there would not be a need to have another 45-day review period for review with the county and the planning commission, nor another public hearing. Any other changes would have to be evaluated at that time. To him.
Thank you. Jim, do you have anything to add at this point?
Time to go.
Okay, I need the list.
Excuse me, may I sign onto the list?
It's all right. We will follow our normal format. You will have three minutes. At the end of three minutes, I will interrupt you, so be forewarned. We'll start with Cindy Juswali while those are signing in.
I'm Cindy Juswali, and I live at 3051 Hoyform Court in Murraysville. Thank you for your diligence in considering how the ordinance and national natural gas drilling could impact the community. You sure have gone above and beyond. Developing this ordinance has been a long, difficult process, and I believe it has reached an adequate point of balance in its current form. There are hundreds of property owners and families in Murraysville that stand to benefit from natural gas drilling activity here, and it's time to put this ordinance behind us and move in that direction. I would like to provide members of council with copies of a Tribune Review article that ran in Friday's paper that presents important information that goes far beyond drilling wells and shows what all of this means for our county. An educational forum was held at Westmoreland County Community College last week that highlighted all the jobs and the growth in our county's manufacturing sector that are being made possible from natural gas drilling. Our high schools and community colleges are training a new generation of workers who can get good jobs without the expense of a four-year degree. Businesses like Durabond, which is headquartered in Export, are growing. Durabond is putting old steel mills like the McKeesport II plant back in business. The Elliott Group, which employs 1,200 people in the county, is supplying equipment to the Shell ethane cracker plant. These types of opportunities would not be happening without natural gas drilling. These are positive developments for Westmoreland County, and Murraysville can be a part of it. Please pass the ordinance as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Holt. While she comes up here, I will note that there are a couple people who are from Ligonier that have signed up to speak. I will reserve a decision based upon council's feelings as to whether they will be permitted to speak, but if they are permitted, they will be at the end. Go ahead.
I have a photo, is it possible to get? Yes, you could even stand in front of me. There.
Allison Holt, 4830 Primrose Lane. Good evening, the oil and gas ordinance, your constituents are commenting on tonight is a pale imitation of what was promised to us, which was a much stronger ordinance that would make residence health, safety, and welfare the top priority. The fundamental flaw in the ordinance remains. It allows fracking well pads in residential zones as close as 750 feet from people's homes. 750 feet is closer than the well pad in the poster than the well pad is to the playground. 750 feet is less than the two-hot distance reported by the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette in 2014, quote, "The Green County fire burned for several," that is, four, "days with flames so hot that the firefighters couldn't get within 900 feet of it," end quote, and I include citation. Too hot for firefighters at 900 feet. How can council possibly defend a 750-foot setback to its constituents? 750 feet is demonstrably too short for a setback distance and must be increased to provide residents with adequate protection. If passed, this ordinance will be boiled down to one, albeit oversimplified, talking point that will be known throughout our region. Murraysville allows fracking 750 feet from homes. Murraysville will be lumped in with communities that have lax fracking regulations, not strong protective ordinances that put public health, safety, and welfare first. For me personally, as someone who served on the Marcellus Task Force, this ordinance is a huge disappointment. If it passes, unconsenting Murraysville residents may be harmed by typical but dangerous spikes in VOC and particulate air pollution. Residents will be disrupted by thrumming noise pollution and vibrations, dust, and increased truck traffic. Residents' peace and sleep and enjoyment of their property may also be diminished for months, possibly years on end. This is the reality we should all expect. I am a no at 750 feet. You can and should do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Mayberry.
Amy Mayberry, 4041 Bendin Circle in Murraysville. While attending some of these meetings, I've heard from numerous residents, realtors, scientists, doctors, and engineers. The vast majority that I've heard have testified in an effort to convince the council to increase the setback distance, and many of those residents don't want fracking in Murraysville at all. You've heard about numerous scientific studies that have made it clear that fracking poses a real risk to the health of the families and children living in our community. Residents and realtors have made it clear that allowing fracking will change the character of our community in a very real and significant way, and not for the better. In fact, I've heard some state that even the possibility of this fracking ordinance is already keeping people from moving here. This damages the economic health of our community. This is all contrasted with the personal property rights of relatively few residents. That I have seen, only a very small number of them have spoken at recent meetings, along with a representative of a company that stands to make a great deal of money off of damaging our community and the health of its residents. Personal property rights are not absolute. The property rights of those wishing to frac are in direct opposition to the property rights of others. Those who wish to live on their land without the noise, traffic, and construction that comes along with having an active well site nearby, and those who wish to be able to count on purchasing a home in Murraysville as a sound investment. The people I haven't yet heard from are you, the council members. I very much want to hear from each of you, before this ordinance passes, why you have decided that it is more important that a few people make money rather than that the character and economic health of our town is maintained. I want to know why it is that you want to allow a relatively small number of residents to make money by allowing fracking rather than to protect the safety and health of the children who live here. When one of us, someone we love, or someone you love, ends up with health problems related to fracking, we will want to know why you allowed this to happen to us. When one of us can't sell our home because fracking is happening nearby, we will want to know why you voted to permit it. Why is my neighbor's right to frac deemed more important than my right to live a healthy life or to be able to sell my home, which for most people is the largest investment they will ever make? As council members elected by us, I believe that you each owe us an explanation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me. This is a public meeting, we're not going to have outbursts if it happens again. I will have you removed from the building. I will never hesitate to call the police if necessary. We have a lot of information to cover, we have a lot of things to discuss. John Smith Esquire representing the Murraysville Watch, Dennis Skiers, and Chetan Anita Smolinski.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My name again is John Smith. First of all, I want to thank council, as lead counsel in the Robinson case to challenge Act 13, Murraysville joined with us and helped us defeat that law, and that's why we're here tonight, because 2012 drilling was permitted in all of your districts as a permitted use. So here we are, and obviously, we skinnied it down. We were successful in that endeavor, and we brought it back to municipal choices. But I think what's gotten lost, and I amass all the time either a special counsel for municipalities, a solicitor for municipalities, or as groups to review ordinances for oil and gas. And looking at your ordinance, obviously, a lot of time went into this. This is not something that was, you know, by happenstance put together. The issue that I take with the ordinance is the issue that I took with Act 13. And the rationale employed by the courts, the rationale we advanced, the rationale you joined with us to defeat the law was that this particular use, this industrial activity, cannot take place in districts where it is not compatible with the existing uses. Now, I recognize, and I've used myself, overlay districts to try to combat what you're doing and what's not unusual, instead of limiting it to where your business district where you have industrial uses. You've chosen before drilling came to town how to segregate your uses. And part of the problem that people have is that they made decisions based on those particular districts. They made decisions based on your stated purposes of your zoning districts. In the document I provided you, I invite you all to read and review the purpose of your rural residential district. It is not for industrial use. To use of an overlay, to try to overlay that district with an industrial use, cannot change the underlying district. That's exactly what it purports to do. It looks basically to try to zone by parcel. Proper zoning is done in Pennsylvania by zoning district, and compatibility is key. So the question is, in Act 13, we permitted drilling in your rural residential area. That was fine unconstitutional, because the use is not compatible. If you were to rezone and place in that district, an industrial district, to allow for compatibility of drilling, we would look at that and say, is that a spot zone? Is that unconstitutional? The overlay district is the absolute same analysis. You have the same result whether the state permitted it in that district, whether you did it by overlay, or whether you rezoned and made of the spot zoning analysis. The guiding force of this is not some statutory command, it is the Constitution. The reason that we were successful, all of us, was because the Constitution protected the expectations of these members of your community. And there are great members on both sides of this issue. I get it. There's nobody to want, I'm sure the community wants everyone to make money, and I have people in my communities making money. But the problem is, I don't even think they want to make money at the expense of somebody else. Technology is catching up to drilling, two, three-mile laterals you're seeing out there. You don't have to be on top of people, you don't have to upset their expectations. And I'll leave you with two quotes from the court in the Robinson decision, I think that clarifies, this is from the Chief Justice, Castile, when they argued that, look, people are going to make money. We can make money, we can make jobs. The court held, "No principle of law permits us to suspend constitutional requirements for economic reasons, no matter how compelling those reasons may seem." And this last one, Ms. Chairman.
Be quick.
To understand what this was about, it wasn't about local governments making the decision, it was about everybody complying with the Constitution. It's the quote, "According to the citizens, this dispute is not about municipal power, statutory or otherwise, to develop local policy, but it is instead about compliance with constitutional duties. Unless the Declaration of Rights is to have no meaning, the citizens are correct." I would ask you to look at this in constitutional realm. Thank you.
Kathleen Boris, 6371 Camaro Hollow Road in Export. Both the Murraysville Code of Ethics and Oath of Office suggest that any judgments you make as council members be free of political and family interests, and that you should recuse yourself if you are not able to do this, or if you believe that your judgment in the end could undermine community trust in you or this council. Realizing that this is not a trial, I still wonder how you defend your positions. I am wondering through what ethical framework you made your decisions to change the setback to 750 feet. I am specifically referring to Mr. Lauren Case, Mr. Joshua Lorenz, Mr. Tony Spadero, and Mrs. Jamie Lee Kornz. I ask this because your office is ultimately about bearing witness to an ethic that is above legal arguments, above political and family interests. Mr. Lorenz, you indicated at an earlier meeting that there would be ample time in this hearing to hear from the four of you on your reasoning for the 750 feet. And so I ask, what is your ethical framework for making a decision for 750 feet? How do you read the U.S. and Pennsylvania constitutions? Through what lens? We often make judgments and think and read things differently from each other, and it is usually because of prior formation in one school of thought or another. And too often, this is heavily tied to political or family interests. How does each of you stand above that in this office and still defend the 750 feet? Too many people have asked you to consider, reconsider the setback distance, and even to consider a moratorium, and yet, instead of addressing their concerns in a real exchange of dialogue, like you would expect at a town hall meeting, I heard a negotiating down of the distance at the last hearing, and in the process, the effective dismissal of people whom you represent. This was disturbing to me on many levels, and I know others were equally disturbed. This is why I ask each of you tonight to be forthright and transparent about your decision-making process, and to explain to all of us how your decision is compatible with your office. And let me add one final thought. I do not think striking a balance is a sufficient argument in the case of industrial processing in residential areas. It ignores certain other fundamental principles and does not take into account all elements of the question. It is taking a rather complex issue and boiling it down to property rights. I expect more from council.
Thank you. Barbara Sims.
I am wearing green. Many of the attendees here tonight are wearing green. Murraysville is very proud of the green spaces in our community, made more so with our many parks and walking trails. Most of our community is currently zoned agricultural and residential. However, our council has voted to install an overlay zone which encompasses 33% of Murraysville. This area will no longer be green. It will be industrial. No matter what Huntley &amp; Huntley or any drilling company say, fracking is still an industrial process, with thousands of trucks carrying sand, water, chemicals, heavy equipment for months on end, depending on how many wells are to be drilled. Emissions of methane, noise, vibrations, and constant light are a definite. Damage to well water, chemical spills, and explosions could be a distinct possibility. The drillers claim this process will only take six months or so, and then all will be the way it was. No. The drillers can return any time to redrill. The leases signed are for 10 or more years and can be renewed without a problem. No longer would this area be a prime location for homeowners. Who will want to build their homes in an area that is drilled, or could be drilled, and has numerous gas gathering lines nearby? Murraysville will be sacrificing a great deal to pacify Huntley &amp; Huntley and other future drillers. And yes, there will be other energy companies coming to Murraysville to drill and gas and profits. The ordinance that our council will be voting on is to allow a 700-foot setback from any protected structure. It was originally 800-foot setback, which is still a pathetic protection for our homeowner who lives nearby. To go lower to a 750-foot setback is a travesty, and it is only giving in to the drillers. I wear my green proudly. If we can't keep fossil fuels in the ground, we at least should be able to assure Murraysville residents that any ordinance that is passed will provide for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents and their property. This ordinance with a 750-foot setback would not do that and should not be passed. If there are any other residents who want to keep Murraysville green with as little fracking as possible, or not at all, please put green on your front doors or your mailbox. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leona Dunnett, 4838 Sardis Road, Murraysville, and 3950 Dunnett Lane in Murraysville. Again, there's not much that I can say that hasn't been said, however, you guys owe it, you as council owe it to us as your constituents, as the taxpayers of Murraysville, the validation for actually going down. A thousand feet isn't even safe. 2,000 feet, I'd like a moratorium. We do know that there's lots of us that don't want fracking. However, we understand that it will happen, it can happen, doesn't belong in a residential zone at all, it's an industrial process. When it does and has to happen because you're forced by industry that's forcing legal battles and so forth, then you owe it to your constituency to reach a real compromise, ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of your citizens. Because it's Article 28 in the Pennsylvania Constitution ensures clean air and pure water. How are you going to guarantee clean air and pure water to every one of your constituents? Those are the questions that you guys ultimately need to answer for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Stanovich, 4339 Bulltown Road. First of all, I'd like to thank all the council members and mayor for all the work you've done, and for the patience you have in dealing with the unbelievable editorials that I see in the Penn Franklin. Penn Franklin is a great paper. I ran a video store here in Murraysville for 15 years, a network video store, knew an awful lot of people. When did we become this vicious? When did we start writing all of the things that you read? When did we start writing all of the things that you read? The world's going to end. Listen, God is first in my life, then family and friends. I wake up every day knowing tomorrow's coming, or I won't be here tomorrow. Why, this catastrophe that some people are portraying is ridiculous. They should have done it with the state. If you didn't want fracking, you should have been at the state meetings and stopping fracking at that situation. But it's good that there's honesty in this green over here, because they really are telling you what they want. They want no fracking. That's what they want. It's not a matter of overlays or all the things that I don't know anything about. It is their viewpoint and their political viewpoint. They have a bent, and it's obviously an environmental bent. So it seems to me that we had an election a couple of years ago, year and a half ago, whenever it was, and the Penn Franklin did a great job explaining what people thought who were running. Well, guess what? It was a landslide. The people who were for fracking, in a reasonable approach, won their elections. The people who were not for fracking, lost. So I'm here, this is the first council meeting I've ever gone to since, I've been on Bulltown Road since '74. So I just thought that I owed it to the council who is working hard. You don't owe anybody an explanation. You were voted in to make decisions for us. You don't owe anybody an explanation? Run against the council member who made a bad decision, in your opinion, and take him out of office, or her out of office. That's your responsibility, telling me that you have to stand up and say, "Mea culpa, mea culpa, I hate to..." Come on. This is ridiculous, and it's a ridiculous process. In deference to my departed wife, she would have been wearing green. So I will say that there are a lot of good people in this room, there are a lot of good people in this whole arena. Make the right decision for the right reason.
Thank you, Mr. Stanovich. And I will say, yes, it is sometimes a ridiculous process, but it's a process that we have to follow according to state regulations, so bear with us. Krista Ross.
What was her name?
Krista Ross.
My name's Krista Ross. I'm from 4347 Raynard Drive here in Murraysville. I'm also a real estate agent with Remax Select Realty. I brought a map for you guys to look at. I've got some others, I'll pass them out to you guys later. But the map you are looking at is the 800-foot setback map. I didn't have a 750 setback, so in theory, everything expands as far as the number of spots available for drilling. The red circles that you see on this map are approximately 1.5-kilometer radius around those sites. Now, this 1.5-kilometer radius is the radius that in 2015, Duke University conducted a study here in Pennsylvania, and found that drilling sites had an average of 13.9% negative effect on the homes, of home values on homes within this area that were on wells. The blue numbers on this map are the 87 homes that have sold in Murraysville or are active on the market in the last five years. I believe this to be approximately a quarter or less of the total number of homes that have wells in these areas. So we are looking at somewhere over 418 houses in our area that have wells, or have sold in the last number of years. So if this Duke study holds true, then what we are seeing is the potential of serious reduction in value to the homes in these areas. Now, that might not affect any of you, because you might not live in these zones, but the homeowners at 5180 Salzburg Road that just bought their house for $387,000 stand to lose $53,000 in value. The homeowner at 6203 Kemmerer Hollow, which had a reasonably priced house at $200,000, stands to lose $27,800 in value. And the owner who is selling at 4729 Ashbaugh might be selling at exactly the right time, because their $584,000 house could well lose $81,000 in value if a site ends up near them. Now, the majority of these people purchased their homes in a rural residential zone that would not have allowed an industrial use, and now they're having this imposed upon them. On the other hand, the homeowners that want to sell their rights are banking on found money, a change in the rules to allow them to capitalize on the land. And while I can certainly understand that, they are taking that money out of the pockets and the enjoyment of their neighbors. I have to wonder if those neighbors that have the potential to lose this kind of value will feel that the municipality has protected them, or if they'll ultimately look for recourse from the municipality for a loss sustained on a decision you made to change their zoning classification. So appreciation in Murraysville has been about 11.4% in the last 10 years. That means that that 13.9% reduction will take them five to 10 years to recover what they will lose almost instantly if they end up with a drilling site near them. One last point about the Duke study that I want to make clear the last time I spoke, they specifically note that home values reflect homeowners' perceptions and fears regarding fracking. The actual risk of shale drilling to groundwater contamination are an indifferent matter. These drops are not related to a specific problem. They are related to the fear and the uncertainty, real or imagined, doesn't matter, because you're talking to homeowners that are making the biggest investment of their lives.
Thank you.
Ms. Ross, do you have this electronically that you might be able to email?
Yes.
I can't read some of that.
I will be happy to get it to you.
We were all like, can't quite read it.
Sorry, it was the best I could do. Everything was sort of low resolution.
Hey! I can't read it. That's all right.
I'm getting old, too.
You're beyond 20.
Just a little.
Mike Sell.
I don't know what your problem is. We can read it fine over here.
Thought it'd be delighting.
Yeah, dream.
Good evening. I'm Mike Sell, I'm at 4309 Woodbine Court, and I want to join everybody else in thanking you for the work you've done. I was thinking a lot about my dad, who was a career public health service, environmental protection agency, eventually earned the rank of commander, worked for them for 39 years. He worked in Las Vegas, he monitored the nuclear test sites when events would happen from underground tests. He and his team would track nucleated dust across Utah to make sure that people were out of the drop sites. When we moved to Cincinnati, he was part of the teams that developed the first national response protocols for toxic chemical spills from trucks, from trains, and industrial sites. So I had a chance to talk with him about matters like this all the time, even if I didn't necessarily want to. He reminded me of three things. The first one is that when you create a policy to cover industrial waste, industrial process, it will inevitably come across as rude and insulting to the people involved. So what I'm going to say is going to sound rude and insulting to those involved, but I hope I can explain why. The thing is, when we create a policy governing industrial processes and its impacts in possible accidents, we need to assume the worst about the people involved. Of course, the people who are actually involved are good, well-meaning, and careful people. But we have to create a policy that concerns someone who might be careless, who might be greedy, who might be incompetent, whether it's a truck driver, a site supervisor, or the person who's purchasing chemicals. We have to assume the worst about what we know about the materials and processes, especially because these materials and processes are constantly evolving, particularly in our anti-regulation environment. I am positive that those involved in this process are following laws and protocols to the letter, but what if a company or an individual cuts corners? Finally, we have to assume the worst possible conditions and impacts of the processes involved, and all the correlative processes such as transportation. Of course, it's probably not going to be bad for most people, and where it is bad, it won't be as bad as we fear. But what if? What if a new technology emerges? What if conditions arrive that create a worst possible case scenario for the conditions and impact of the processes? So what I'm ultimately urging the council to do is repeal and replace. Maximum concern for all conceivable impacts, presuming the most annoying and noxious conditions, and taking seriously the worst imaginable accidents. And I urge you to repeal and replace. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Norman Frankie, 4816 Sardis Road, Murraysville. The blue shirts are unhappy, the green shirts are unhappy. That's what you call a compromise, to which I say, good job, council. While not ideal, the 750-foot setback from the well pad provides a safe distance, protected structure, as well as providing the ability to drill. The proposed 750-foot setback from the well pad is about 1,000 feet from the well bore, which is double the state minimum. The proposed 1,200-foot setback from the well pad makes it almost impossible to drill. The 500-foot state setback from the bore hole makes it easier to drill, but faces intense opposition. The current ordinance satisfies both safety while maintaining the ability to drill for shale gas. Personally, I prefer the 500-foot setback from the bore hole, but I understand in light of intense opposition, it's impractical. Also, by past precedence, drilling has been permitted in rural areas.
Thank you.
Jeri Ann Benish, 2869 Shade Hill Road in Irwin, but I have a farm on Hills Church Road. We've all been to many meetings and have spoken many times regarding the natural gas drilling ordinance. Both sides of the issue have facts and information that are meaningful and supportive of their respective positions in this important process. One fact that I think both sides should be able to agree on is that Pennsylvania has one of the most comprehensive regulatory programs in the country. Another fact that we can all agree on is that no one, especially landowners like me, want any harm done to anyone here in this municipality. Landowners are not greedy, mean people. Some of us really love our farm, we play on it, we really like the land. We just want to be able to benefit from the resources on the property that we own. We are not anti-environmental, as some would portray us, we want things done as safely as non-landowners do. Life is full of compromise. Sadly, in today's world, that's hard to come by. We are bombarded by it daily, especially in the political world. This side won't listen to that side, that side won't listen to this side, and it's not because the ideas don't have merit, it's just because. We have come to a compromise of a 750-foot setback from the edge of the well pad to an occupied structure. It's not ideal for either side, but that's what it means to come to an agreement. It's a compromise. Thank you for not changing the ordinance, pass it as it is now.
Thank you.
We've been to several of these meetings in the past, and I know this has been going back and forth for a very long time. But it seems to me that a lot of people bring emotion into the equation, and there are a lot of facts to be considered. Nobody seems to be real interested in the facts. Fracking is a relatively safe process. We've known that, we've seen it. IUP has studied it. We talked about the safety, the environment. Studies are done all the time. People don't seem to be interested in facts. It's all about what they believe. I will say one thing, though. The gentleman said about what if, we've got to regulate as if what if. If it's what if, we won't leave our houses, you won't get in a car, and you won't go on vacation, because you could have an accident, you could come down with the flu. You need to pass this ordinance as it is, enough deliberation has taken place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Copeland, 3111 Deerfield Court. Good evening. A few weeks ago, I read an interesting article in the Post-Gazette summarizing the findings of a fiscal health study conducted for Murraysville. The study's findings were twofold. One, that Murraysville has become a wealthier community, and that the revenue from wage taxes now exceeds those of real estate taxes. And two, that while the population of Murraysville increased, the greatest increase is in the population of those 65 years and older, and the greatest decrease is within the younger population, ages 5 to 14. The study projected that by 2020, over 3,000 residents will have reached retirement age, which could potentially impact the municipality's earned income revenue. At the end of the article, Mr. Morrison was quoted as stating, "From a planning point of view, the increasing age of our population is scary. We are trending to the older side. We need to begin to look at what we need to do to attract younger families. What services are geared toward them?" This is a very good question, Mr. Morrison, and one that is especially frustrating for the many, many young families who have come before you, telling you what has brought us here, and what will continue to attract young families to this municipality. We, the young, well-informed, and considerable source of income tax revenue, want a safe place to raise our families. We want a cutting-edge school district. We want a serene neighborhood, or a plot of land where we can grow old. We want stable property values. We want you to protect our rights to clean air, clean water, and environmental stability and beauty. We love the rural charm of Murraysville. We love the close proximity to the city. We love the many parks and recreational areas. We love the school district. We love the closeness of the small community. Unfortunately, many of these wonderful qualities that brought us to Murraysville will be compromised or jeopardized by this industrial process that you are welcoming into our residential community. If you want to attract young, well-paid individuals and families to move into this municipality, listen to us and reconsider this ordinance. This ordinance does not appropriately address the needs and concerns that have been voiced to you. Young families and individuals are becoming better informed as the risks of fracking become more and more evident. I have yet to hear a young family express that they moved here to raise their family near a fracking pad. Passing this current ordinance does not protect the current residents, some of whom are already looking to move. And it is not a responsible action for the future of Murraysville, as many young families have already passed on living here. In conclusion, I just want to reiterate the question that has been asked. What do we need to do to attract younger families to Murraysville? We have given you the answers. Your current actions by supporting this ordinance are counterproductive in achieving that desired result. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Longdon, 3331 Logan Ferry Road, Murraysville. For about eight years, I've watched citizens of Murraysville try to prevent the gas industry takeover of our land and welfare. It's been a long time, many of them are still here. This council provided residents with educational sessions to prize us of potential short and long-term harm of selling off our natural gas resources, which is really what it is, they're selling it off. The residents of Murraysville appear to have lost tonight. The real winners are foreign nations such as Norway, UK, China, India. You can Google all this and find out the names, with tentative contracts for our shale gas. These countries will happily purchase our gas resources. Barbara, I wish you were reading this. Your voice is better. These nations are waiting with these tentative contracts. They will happily purchase our gas resources while keeping their children's lungs free of toxic benzene and methane. They'll just take the gas, we're due to suffer. We will suffer this harm and other forms of collateral damage. We know about the children's.
You have to use the microphone in order to be heard.
This has already been mentioned many times about the children and the benzene in their lungs.
You have to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. Have I been...
Yeah, when you're talking to the audience, it's lost.
Okay, I sort of feel I am.
You can take it.
Okay. All right, I told you, this is the real issue here. These nations with these tentative contracts, waiting for these drillers to give them the shale gas under our feet. We'll suffer this harm, the harm for the children I'm talking about, and other forms of collateral damage. Council made, probably made... Council made, probably made, the wrong decision tonight. It's unbelievable. I've been here for eight years, thinking it's not possible. What kind of people are we? But we'll see.
Thank you. All right, that's everyone except two people from Ligonier. Does council wish to hear from them?
Yes.
All right. Jan Milburn.
From Ligonier PA, I'm president of the Westmoreland Marcellus Citizens Group for Westmoreland County. In response to an earlier speaker, you do not decide zoning code by votes. Zoning code is determined by law and by observing legal procedure. I know you've seen the studies. I know that you know that 90 to 94% of those studies indicate harmful effects of fracking to public health, to our air, and to our water, and there are now hundreds of those studies. This ordinance is not protective of the health of families. Residential areas have been overlaid with industrial frac zones. Families planned on raising their children in safe zones. No area is more than two to two and a half miles from a potential frac zone. While New York and Maryland have passed bans, Murraysville could not approve a 1,500-foot buffer for their families. That's minimal. If you want to talk scientific facts, here's a fact. Health studies are showing disease and risk to our children at one mile, two miles, three miles, 10 miles. Fact, our children are most at risk. Asthma, congenital heart and neural tube defects, neurological problems, premature births. Some of these studies were done right here in Westmoreland County. They're independent academic studies. You can find them in the research. That's the science. That's the fact. It's your job to protect families' health and welfare. It is not your job to provide for economic benefit for the gas industry and for leasers. Fracking is simply not compatible with residential living. This ordinance is not protective. I speak on behalf of my grandsons, who have to attend school here. I ask you, please vote no, and come back with something more protective of our children's health. Thank you.
Jack Milburn.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I am from Ligonier, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My daughter, son-in-law, and two precious grandsons shop, live, play sports, and go to school here. So I'm very concerned about what I consider to be a limited amount of protection for families. The gas industry, I teach, by the way, an energy management course, and I interact with gas employees all the time. They like to argue that, well, it's not really industrial. Well, yeah, it is. You know that. Common sense tells you that. So then some will say, well, it doesn't happen all the time, meaning all year. Okay, granted. So what? U.S. Department of Labor and OSHA identify gas operations as industrial, as did the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, by the way. They are assigned an SIC code, Standard Industrial Classification. They're in an industry group, 138, subgroup 1381. Look it up. It's an industrial activity and therefore belongs in an industrial zone. I worked in the electric generation industry for over 35 years, and I can assure you that the kinds of problems that you've heard about for many months do happen. The problem with this industry is these type of industrial incidents can happen in your neighborhoods. I've heard a few residents say they should have the ability to do what they want. Not so. You know that. American jurisprudence says, "Do what you want with your property so long as you don't harm others." It's impossible, I would argue, not to harm your neighbors. Why? You can't contain the noise, the light, the air pollution, the truck traffic, the water pollution. You can't do it. It's impossible. You know that. You're considering things like buffer, 750 feet. That's absurd, in my view, council. I can hit a golf ball that far. Okay, on a good day. But you get the point. It's nothing. It's absolutely nothing. 1,500 feet is a minimum distance that should be considered for buffers if you want to at least mitigate some of the problems for neighboring properties. Flower Mound and Dallas, Texas, recently enacted 1,500-foot buffers. In Texas! Think about it. These are facts, not fears. Council, please have the courage to do what you need to do to protect the citizens of this beautiful community where my grandsons live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milburn. All right, that's the end of our list. All right, you'll have to come and sign in. That's the last two. No, no, that's it. We have advertised this to start at 6:15. You had plenty of time to get here. These last two will be it. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Brandis, and I live at 207 Georgetown Lane here in Murraysville. It's in 15632. I have a significant interest at the property at 5149 Maymont Road, and I have helped invest into that home where my daughter and her husband and my two granddaughters live. I will be helping them, when I sell as part of my property in Arizona, to help pay for their house. But why would I invest in it if I'm going to lose a significant percentage of their property? I do have a degree in public planning from northern Arizona, and I worked in the planning department in the city of Flagstaff for nearly 10 years. And I own a significant amount of property out in Flagstaff, Arizona, which I'm currently on contract. So I know about zoning. I know that this does seem like a very inconsiderable type of zoning use. I apologize if I use some different words. I had a light stroke in 2014, so it's a little difficult for me occasionally to come up with...
You're doing fine.
...words. But I do believe that, I know that we would never have permitted industrial uses in a close to residential uses in Arizona at all. While I was there, and I've only been here for two years, but I do know that in Arizona, they look pretty harshly on uses, or cities that permit uses that change the use of other properties that are affected. Like, and they allow people to sue cities to have cities require them to pay them for their losses, especially for signs. I was a sign coder. But, and as a planner, if you change the land use and they reduce the value of the property, they can sue the city, or the municipality, or the county, and that's in Arizona. It's pretty, it's not progressive. It's kind of a restrictive thing to do for a city to do, and cities do try to be progressive and proactive to look out for their uses in their zoning. And their zoning use is one reason why people do like Murraysville, me included. But I hear what some of the speakers are saying about they're concerned about their losses because such an industrial use that fracking is. It's not like putting up in a 200, you know, it's like a big sign or something that's going to destroy their place. It's not a land use that doesn't affect the underground land, you know, like a structure or something. This is an environmental use. It's not just an industrial use. It's all of the things that people have said, like the traffic and the air and the water, especially water here. So many people, my daughter is on a well. It's like, oh, my God, you know, I can't even think about that. It's from an Arizonan who has no water at all. A premium for water out there.
Thank you.
But anyway, I'm very concerned about that spot zoning type of use.
Thank you. Kimberly, is it Birch? Okay.
Kimberly Birch, 4014 Chelsted Way, Murraysville. Theismboy, U R C H. You're welcome. I came up specifically for one task that I will open with, to speak to the what-if. I think the what-if already happened. My son stood with some of your children and watched his classmates and his teachers taken out when they were overcome by thumes. And where do those thumes come from? From the temporary cause of fracking trucks, okay? From Penn Trafford. They weren't even, you couldn't protect us from that. You had no power. Okay? So, but now it is in your court. You do have the protection. Okay? So maybe that won't happen again. Maybe my son won't watch his friends fall down, or his teachers get so sick. Okay? So that came to mind, but even more, one of the reasons, I thank you for letting me come up, is, you know, I sat last week at a table with a Republican school board member who's talking about investing millions, over $50 million, in our school system to build a new school. Why? To strengthen our school system, to bring young families, to draw them to our community. And what I see with this 250-foot increase from the state minimum of the 500 is inadequate. It's going to sabotage what our school board, a Republican school board, I never thought I'd hear myself say that, that they are going to invest this substantial amount of money for our children. Now, it probably won't benefit my children, but hey, that's fantastic. And then, on the other hand, our council is going to allow 750 feet? I can't resolve that. And so, thank you for letting me speak, because I just didn't directly hear anyone say that.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. With that, we will return, when I get to the right piece of paper, to the council action items. Mr. Morrison.
Madam President, you need to close the public hearing. Yeah, we have the saldo.
Oh, gee whiz. Does council wish to close the first public hearing?
Yes.
All right, that's closed. We will then go to the second public hearing, and that is on proposed ordinance 955-16 and ordinance of the municipality of Murraysville amending Chapter 201, Sections 54, 71, 101, and 141 of the municipal codes, subdivision and land development, to add submission requirements for land developments and streets and access drives. And before we go into that, you know, it's interesting. You talk about all the times that you have attended these meetings. We've been there too. So, you know, we've... Alan.
Hey, thank you. This hearing, as described by the president of council, was advertised in the Penn Franklin two consecutive weeks, March 29th, March 22nd. It was necessitated by changes that were made to this ordinance as a result of discussion after the last public hearing. The major change that was made to this ordinance was removal of language referring to including requirements for justification of meeting the environmental rights amendment in the environmental impact statement that's required by the municipality. That language was removed, and accordingly, that was considered a substantial change, and the ordinance was sent to the county and the planning commission for the required 45-day period and this new public hearing. We have received, the county had no comments on the change. The planning commission had no other comments except for the change to the street access drives requirement. They had proposed some new provisions, new language, on the measurement of the pavement versus the width of the pavement width of the driveway versus the actual width of the opening of the street, and added provisions for a requirement of wheelbase that would accommodate a fire truck with a 250-inch wheelbase. That was their recommendation to make some changes to this ordinance. And that can be considered by council as a suggestion. I have no other comments.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments regarding the changes to the subdivision and land development ordinance? Does Mr. Morrison have any comments?
No, ma'am.
Do the council members have any comments? Do you wish to close the public hearing on the changes to the saldo?
Quickly, before...
Before somebody speaks? That hearing is closed. Thank you. All right. Now, we'll go to the council action items. Thank you, Nancy. The first, under community development, is an authorization to advertise. Who would like to tackle it?
I'm just right here.
Would you like me to read it?
I can do it.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to advertise proposed ordinance number 930-15, an ordinance of the municipality of Murraysville, repealing and replacing Section 22030-31 CC of the zoning ordinance, exploration or production of oil or natural gas from a shale reservoir or source rock, and adding new uses to Section 220-16, the table of non-residential land, principal land uses.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Lauren. Questions or comments from council?
And just to make clear, this is simply an authorization to advertise the ordinance. This is not a vote on the ordinance.
This does not mean it's cast in concrete. It is still subject to changes until such time as we take a final vote. Alan.
If council wishes to consider the technical changes, amendments that are included in the packet on your desk, it would be part of the motion, or an amendment to the motion, to include those changes in the ordinance that's advertised.
To clarify, I wouldn't consider them technical changes. I mean, those are very generic wording changes.
wording changes. I say non-substantive changes.
Does the maker of the motion wish to include the minor wording changes?
Include the minor wording changes.
Okay.
Although, Alan, one minor comment, if you go to the strike-through protected structure, there, it's the first line located and needs to get deleted as well. It's out of, it didn't get struck out. It should.
Yeah, it goes with the rest of the phrase.
Which one is that?
The strike-through.
Oh. Any occupied structure.
On protected structure. It currently reads, "Any occupied structure with walls and a roof within which persons live or customarily work and then located, the attached portion that located should come out."
It's not relevant.
Yeah. It was with the clause that said, "Located within the oil and gas recovery open district." Yeah, that just needs to come out.
Is the second to the motion in agreement with inclusion of the minor wording changes? Are there any questions from council on the motion to advertise? Roll call.
Mrs. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Kearns?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee-Corn?
Mrs. Lee Horns?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Seano?
No.
Mr. Spaderro?
Yes.
Mr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five to two. And again, this is simply a motion to advertise. The ordinance is still subject to change up until the time a final decision is made by this council. So... The next is the motion to advertise the changes to the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Make a motion to advertise proposed ordinance number 955-16, an ordinance of the municipality of Murraysville amending Chapter 201, Sections 54, 71, 101, and 141 of the municipal code, subdivision and land development, to add submission requirements for land developments and streets and access drives.
Second.
Tony, thank you, Tony. Alan, any comments on this ordinance?
This could also include...
Minor word changes.
Yep, yep, yep. Get the microphone.
On the access roads as well.
So we probably need an amendment?
And amended to include access, revisions with access roads.
I think we can just do it that way without having a separate amendment. All right, George? Is the second in agreement with that?
Yes.
It's a, the, 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 for you to advertise for consideration for adoption. How long do you have to?
All right, is the, Alan, do you have any further comments on this one?
No.
Okay, all right. Questions?
No.
And again, this is a motion to advertise only. Roll call.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Kearns?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Horns?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Kepler?
No.
Five to two.
Mr. Spaderro?
Yes.
Mr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Now it's five to two.
It was two, two to three there a minute ago.
I'm quick on math. Okay. Now, if I can just find my agenda here among all the papers.
I got mine right here.
Yeah, I got it. Under new business, anything, Mr. Morrison?
I, I think it would be appropriate to talk about how we move forward with these two ordinances at this time.
Okay.
From an advertising point of view and a targeted consideration date. You want to fill in the...
Yeah, this is the advertising, as you said, and it's an advertisement to, to consider adoption. And that's, has to be advertised, it's ten days prior to the date you can consider, consider adoption of the ordinance. So we're looking at, you know, two weeks. We'd have to be, to be, to consider it on April 19th. You'd have to have it advertised almost right, right away. So probably the first meeting in May is the most likely.
We have several members of council that will not be at the April 19th meeting.
When will we have comments from the Murraysville Planning Commission? Mr. Spaderro indicated last night that they're coming, but...
They were presented.
They were presented.
You have them up here?
Yeah. Those were the, those were the wording, some of the wording changes, and I did recommend adoption of the 750.
Would possibly be prepared for, on the May 3rd, to consider enactment of the ordinances?
I guess, I guess, May 3rd.
I have no problem.
Let me look. I think it's fine. I'm gonna look.
And if any changes are brought up between now and then, then they have to go back?
We don't anticipate any changes.
I'll be known as authorized tonight.
Right.
Yeah, I'm here.
Are you okay on the 3rd?
I'm in town.
Yeah, it's fine. I don't, I don't have any Murraysville's comments.
Okay, we have nothing under old business.
Hearing that we may have a number of council people missing on the 19th.
How many are missing?
Yeah, how many are we talking about? Because there's two issues coming back. One is the leash law consideration, and the other is the fee ordinance and facility use, which may have some public input. If you would desire, I can move those to the May 3rd meeting.
It's up to you.
Throw all the controversial stuff in on one night. Let's just, let's get it done with.
So move it all to the 3rd of May?
Sure.
It's fine. I think I'll go out of town.
Dave, you have a chicken thing?
I have not brought the chicken thing up.
So you would want me to move those two items to the May 3rd meeting also?
I guess.
You know, Dave, you've got time to bring it up.
All right.
Okay.
Go out with bang or cluck.
Executive session, nothing? Action items, nothing?
About the...
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, yeah. That means we have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Are adjourned amazingly at, at 7:55.
Thank you, council.
Did we vote on that?
All in favor, don't you dare say no.